You know how I'm doing.
Here?
Here.
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 Yeah, here. Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse my case for a second? Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, thank you very much. First up, personal safety. First being the amended ordinance, Section 20 compensation, to set salary ranges for all the Florida heads. I think what brought this discussion on is they're gonna be, you know, hiring a finance director here, Karen leaves in June. And I looked at the look green that put out, they're in search of a finance director as well, their salary range was well over a lower rate. And I think that, you know, the fact of the matter is to attract competent, highly talented individuals who are going to have to give it the times and I don't think, not that I'm not doing this reluctantly, but I would rather them stay in the same where they're at. Give the taxpayer a great value, but that's just not a lower rate right now. And that's my opinion. I'll hear what you guys have to say. And there's another component as well as the vacation. We're gonna be pulling, say, we bring a finance director from somewhere else in four or five weeks. All we can offer them is one week to start out with. I'm not saying that we offer the full five or whatever the case may be, but at least give them something to take so. I tend to agree with you. This is a very competitive world. It is, you know, people just don't get a job if they can't go to school or can't, like maybe you should be at one point. There are a lot of people out there in the competency level that you want to get as high as you can to that position. And I think that's true of a lot of the, you know, administrative activities over the years. And when last time this has changed. I feel a lot higher than my career that you have to be competitive, you have to be top. Which we kind of need to get people to. And we've got so much responsibility on that group, you know, where their finance director, alderman, or something. I won't include you, Mr. Nasher, that we, and we expect, you know, North Canton. We have to be burnt at, if we want, right? If we want to get to the highest level we can. It was also given our tax, our people, taxpayers the best they will want in this group. And this is a pretty good affair of taxpayers.
I think it was really smart to look into what our barriers are doing. I think we need to keep doing that. I do a lot higher than myself. I've looked at salaries for a lot of nonprofits and there's a range. We have to be within it. I think taxpayers expect that. The taxpayers expect to make a fair wage. So why would we not want more people to make that same fair wage? And as far as vacation goes, nobody should have to take a vacation pay cut to work here. We have to make that, if you're coming in with 20 years, you certainly would not put some of that down to a B. You don't do that in professional setting, you don't do that in nonprofits, you don't do that anywhere. I would come, you know, for this job. So we have to be competitive in that area as well. And if you have a career and you've been working for 30 years, then you have to, I think, offer a vacation that's competitive.
Let me say this, to avoid any confusion, because a comment is made right before we started here. These proposed changes in salary ranges doesn't mean that these people are automatically getting these ranges, that they're not making.
It's a range?
Yeah, it's a range. And I use the finance director position as an example, what's going to be over soon and, you know, competing to the municipalities around us are offering a lot higher than what our current ranges will allow.
Well, and for a lot of positions. And we might say, someone might come over five weeks and we might say, no, we really, we can't do that. And so we might start, you know, a little bit of that, but we have to be competitive in all aspects.
I think that's the key is, what we're creating here is a breaking issue and we're creating a place flexibility. So if you have someone who isn't as experienced, maybe we have a candidate who's a young parent who comes in and says, hey, I'm willing to take a little less, I've got your experience, but I'd like to have a two week vacation because the state should make sure that's important. Or vice versa. You know, someone who's gonna say, I only need two weeks, but I have a lot of experience, I deserve a pretty good salary, and I can bring a lot of value to the table, let's resolve that. So I think it's worth giving ourselves flexibility, which is to create our range, which is the key.
Yes.
And to have them move up while they're in there.
Right, right.
To get them to move up. To do a good job, you know, when we can reward them in future, to move up.
Well, exactly. And that speaks to that point. When we hire a finance director, they probably are not going to be paid at the top range. There will be some range in there as their performance, as they perform throughout the course of their tenure, gives them ability to get a raise.
Jeff, does this represent the low side of it, the middle side, or the high side of it?
It's the high side, I believe, the ceiling.
So that's, so these numbers we're looking at are basically ceilings?
Yeah, the low that.
And the two are listed?
This is the point of reference, looking at Nigeria, this was a pay range. So nobody's making this right now, nobody can just vote for both. I think we talked a little bit about this for the council, we want to adjust that one? Yeah, that's the one that wasn't adjusted. I think, I think it will be in our best interest to set that ceiling. I didn't get a chance to look at all the, was everything down, sort of skilled, order, labor, so forth, was that all just? No, we just want to list the sections. Do you think it's really able to make? Okay, just to make sure. Okay, but? Yeah. I guess what we have to do is to agree on our as relates to the clerk position, everything else is spelled out here.
Is this the current one, right now?
Current, twenty one forty six. Two is the top range.
Maybe look at the percentage and figure out, okay, for the other group, if we can put that percentage in place for the clerk. Again, this is a ceiling, this isn't, you know, automatically, Mayor Best is gonna get a $10,000 raise. He does expect that, I think. But, um, I think there'd be also, there's a reason they were sent down across the board to give it a range. That does make sense.
Right.
Same with that person who hit that. We now, of course, have evaluations, a lot of recognition, recognition activities to look at performance. And if we're going with the performance, we've got to have incentives to move those people up along with that. Wouldn't it be better to have like the range, like the low range, high range, so you can see the spread? Instead of show the high range, it's the same way, more sense? Not really.
Well, when you're hiring, that's good, but for this ordinance level, there's no reason to show that. We're gonna hire someone that probably will do that.
Okay, fair enough. Good point, good one.
The cable clerk's administrative position. May I have a look?
Is there, was there a specific percentage that we put on this, or going down the door, or, I mean, I just want to just do everybody else's, unless you're?
No.
What is it?
I think, for the purposes of our, from here, to put it, I thought it would be between twenty four sixty five sixty two. It's the same first.
Okay.
No, I believe, yeah. Because the other two.
We, we suggest we attach the same percentages on those two positions as well. There's no purpose to it at all. There's no, I mean, if we're gonna do this, let's do it to across the board.
Yeah, I was saying like either twenty four sixty five sixty two or twenty five ninety nine fifty two.
Those are all the same floor?
Right, yeah, so we keep those, it'll be easier to reveal on that.
The same range from over?
Right, the same, same.
Anybody else have a comment on that?
Another favor. So the finance, I mean, there's a range, we have to go over what I had to get that.
Yeah. I mean, is that like, is it applying here?
No, we've got some interest, but there are people who are showing interest with.
Yeah, I was seeing it most early.
Mayor and I had a discussion about this last week. As we were talking about process and moving forward. I was like, you know, one of the things that happens in these interviews is that you tend to think of it when you're interviewing people as a, you're the person who's hiring, and the person who's sitting between the interviewers, like who really wants the job. But if things are going well, it's usually the other way around, right? The person hired is saying, you're such a great candidate. What can we do to maximize you being here? And, you know, of course, we probably all have been in conversations like that. Hopefully, occasionally, that's how it happens, right? But that's the situation we need to be, we need to be able to say, we're competitive. For lots of reasons, because we're in a competitive place. But also from, from our own expectations, so we have to be able to have a little room to negotiate here together, so.
Absolutely. Keep in mind too, that when we're, like, as a commander, and I was talking with, also the representative of all this, that when we're posting a position, it's different than the private sector. This is a public posting. So if you have somebody that presently has a position in public service, then they have to, then they have to publicly apply, which is part of the process. But if we don't post a salary range that is competitive, they may not apply at all. So when you have these high ranges, I believe that you're going to get better candidates that are willing to submit their resume because they'll be able to maybe make a $10,000 or $20,000 advancement in their salary. Or at least justify to their present employer why they're applying. Because oftentimes, we've posted positions and if we didn't have the, the range, what's the first thing a person asks? How much is it paying? And so that's why I was glad that council is willing to put in pay ranges for the key positions. So that at least you can have a good look at all of the qualified candidates that are coming in. And at least they have an idea that the position could go up to an extra number of dollars.
Right. That's a good point, Mayor, because when you work for government, all the time, once you put your name out there, your current employer maybe feels that you're that, you know,
No longer.
You're no longer, you know, committed to that job.
Personally.
You know, you're trying to really look at a different position for, for better than your family or, or your career. And I think that, because those names will be the paper.
Absolutely.
You know, and one of those is gonna come out, right? So, you know, what's your chances, you know, so? It's important to realize that it could be more, and it does give you a reason, does give you a range of work.
It does change the perspective too. When you have someone that is, you know, under your employment as an elected official, and they see a position that's available, and that salary range is significantly higher than what you have, are paying them presently, it's really, you know, it brings a lot of understanding as to why somebody would apply for that job, makes sense. But if it doesn't have a stated salary, then immediately you think, you don't even know if the position is paying, and you're already willing to submit a resume. So I think that it's, it's really a wise move that the council's concerned to be with. And again, that can be negotiated, depending on their qualifications and their current salary.
Any other questions as it relates to the salary ranges and always vacation?
Do we resolve that?
I think we're the same percentage. So we're attached to all the other positions.
So the vacation flexibility, you're saying, right, you do the entry level of this?
Right.
But you have the flexibility to modify that for a candidate that can have a candidate?
Up to, up to four weeks.
No, the candidate that's coming to the same level.
No, no, I just wanna make sure that the vacation is not ridiculous.
Now, someone, I mean, if someone's coming in with a, at the level of a five week or a six week, they're definitely, they're gonna be, it's only raises.
We need a discussion about that.
It's fair.
Yeah.
For the period of that.
Okay, so everyone, okay, the ranges and the vacation. Okay, up next is the resolution, uh, present there regarding to the memorandum of understanding to the Department of Labor and State shares to support the state county, the task force.
Didn't we, what was the last, we just had a memorandum of emergency and enter into?
Same thing they do yearly, they have to show the grant that they're doing yearly. This time, there was some delay, whether the sheriff's department was gonna do it or somebody else, the sheriff took the lead on it. And that's really why it's, we're asking for the emergency, is because we just found out about it, maybe you get a paper or a hand. So we're happy the sheriff did everything that's in the worthwhile program, we get reimbursed for everything that we did. But that's why we just turned it to a shortcut.
Everyone okay with that? Okay, so we'll get that on, the next agenda with an emergency clause in it, and next up, the street now, Sheriff Fata.
Mister President, members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen. I'm excited to share with you today, hard work presentation together to bring up the street now is the ditch. And as a lot of you know, the zimmer ditch has been such a two thing, I see lots of files up there, you know my name. So, the zimmer ditch, can we hit a light or something so we can see that better?
They all have.
Why don't you kill the lights? So just so you know, this is like 5,000 K. So anyhow, so the zimmer ditch, obviously, has been playing in the city for, I don't know, 30 years or so, probably. Oh, there we go. So what I want to do is, there's 19 houses that are involved in the mitigation program. And 18 of them are actually in North Canton. So what I want to do is, it's important to help people and citizens that we know what's happening. So the map represents the 18 homes that affect the North Canton. So if you look at it, it's hard to tell. But you can see like, right here is Glendale, okay? And this is Lindwood, and it really represents the zimmer ditch area. So you'll see the group of houses in, in small print on your print presentation, there's numbers on everything. So as we go through the presentation, the numbers are reflected there, so you can go back and look at it and figure out what the house is like. So as you're going down Glendale, heading towards Whipple, when you get to Lindwood, you turn right, which is north, and you would see this group of houses. South would be a cul-de-sac, which had to go through the golf course. Okay, so the next slide will represent the first house. So on the corner of Glendale and Lindwood, so you can see the house, the before photo here is on the Glendale side. And I took a picture here, which happens to be Lindwood. So you can see the side, this is 931, so they demoed, that was actually the first one to get demoed. Two through five, on the next slide, we're looking south here. And so these houses here, four houses, and you see the addresses, 725, 715, 707, 711. Now, these homes were down in the first round, so the first five. So if you drive down the street, you're going to see a little ranch home by its own, so around all the open space, so they have their own parklands. And that's maintained by Stark Parks. Number six on the Glendale Street, which is just a little further, headed north. You can see the top view, what it looked like before, of course, now that one's demoed. And again, the number six, if you look at the map after everything, you'll see the numbers in order. Number seven, this was one, I don't know if you guys remember, John Heiner, his house, he was one that was very active.
Just one question.
Yes.
On the map, it looks like there's a gap there between five and six?
Uh, there's one house, a yellow house, between five and six. So you have one through five, and then there's a house, and then six. So if you track down the street, you'll see a little yellow house. And that one is still there, and they're quite happy to stay there and have all that open space themselves, okay? So on this particular home, number seven, 605 Lucille, this one was demoed July. 1279 Lindwood, which is the next one. Now, this particular one was scheduled to be in the initial group, but it did get demoed because they contested the appraisal. So this would be on the south side of Glendale, in the cul-de-sac. So if you drive all the way down towards the golf course, it's in the cul-de-sac. So that one's scheduled for the end of May. Okay, so now here, we're heading back on the other side, heading north again, on Lindwood or Lucille. This one sits on the corner of Glendale. The corner of Glendale is a ranch home you can see from the top. They demoed that one out in two. Um, the next one is scheduled, so there are three actually scheduled for the end of May. Uh, this is 33, 333 Linwood Southwest. And, uh, of course, on the map, you'll see number 10 represent this one. Number 11, uh, which is 1125 Glendale, uh, this one was the one that the, um, there was a lot of controversy about this family that lived there. Uh, they were unfairly picked because they had a lot of flooding. Well, finally, uh, it came through for them, they're gonna get, uh, demoed, probably the end of May. Soon as the demoed houses come in, we're still working on it, I guess. So this one will be, uh, at the farthest north point. Okay, number 12, um, this one here is looking west, uh, it's 1253 Linwood. Uh, this one would be obviously on the southern side of Glenwood, take Linwood down. Uh, number 13 is an interesting one because this particular property, um, just transferred. So it was on the list, the first 19 list, they get demoed, the people sold it for 144.9. The folks that bought it, bought it in October 2015, which is recently. Now, since it's on the list and they don't look at the owners, they look at the properties, uh, this is now on the list to at least get an offer pitched their way. So they'll make an offer to them, give the appraisal. It's a voluntary program, keep in mind, so they don't have to, uh, take the buyout. And if they don't take the buyout, then the latest round of money, the rate, latest round of money then would push us to number 14. So number 14 is 1263 Glenwood, which again is all the way on the southern part of Linwood, towards the cul-de-sac, out of Red. Now, this one here, these people would have an opportunity to be, uh, in this next round, uh, with the current money that we just received on, uh, April 19th. For the money that we just got awarded, uh, if 12 and 13 do not take their offer. Okay, so you can see it looks like a rainy day here. So number 15 on the list, um, this one's facing east, uh, this would be future grant money. Number 16, uh, so we have 19 on the list, this is 16, this is actually located on Arbor Stadium, which is in Plain. So we have 18 of the 19 houses, this one's really not in our jurisdiction at the moment. Number 17, a little pond in front yard, uh, 615, again, this is, uh, uh, you know, potentially acquired on the list with future money that we do not have at this time. Uh, 1107 Glenwood, number 18, it's not funded, but again, they're on the list, and potentially they could be funded if we find more money. And again, we're looking north in that direction. And number 19, which is an alternate, uh, number 19, um, again, this is on Linwood, this is the last house in the cul-de-sac on Red. Um, she's been the one we get on the list, she got off the list, and I guess, uh, she's the last one on the initial list of all the grant money. And there are a secondary list that started, okay? So that would be down, wrote out with the 19 are taken care of. So the way they worked it out in summary is, we had 19 homes in the initial list, 11 have been acquired. We had eight demoed, which I just showed you, the eight. The three, two to three are in this next round, uh, which should be done by the end of, uh, May. And turned back to grassland and is maintained by Start Parks. And, uh, the balance of the 19, whatever is not done, will be through the future money that we come across. So if you remember back about a year or so ago, uh, we got our initial line, okay? It was done in two increments, so it was a basket of money, 1.5 million. And it was broken into 1.125 from FEMA, uh, and then we got state funding, uh, 185, 5, 100K from Los Canyon Watershed. 27.5 from county commissioners, and then our portion at that time, if you remember, was 60,000, which turned up to 1.5 million. So the way, uh, the fund's working, since it's a government money, there's a lot of red tape. They were able to let, uh, let it be put into one bucket of money, so as the grants come in, uh, it just goes into the bucket, we can use it. Or they can use it to take care of this, to make it a speedier process with less, uh, litigation. The second group of money we got was like around October, we had that meeting, public meeting. And, uh, the reason why we got this money is because, um, West Lake up north, uh, was in the same similar situation as us, but people opted out of using the money. So the money came back to the fund, and again, Representative Shering was able to secure that additional dollars. So it was 241,0875 came back into the pot, we grabbed a hold of it quickly. Uh, the state brought in 40,000, 313, and of course, the balance split up between the other, um, you know, the other groups, which was 40,000, uh, 312. Which brought us to 322,500, which was that second, uh, group of money, which was awarded one. And then our portion, if you remember, was 12,900. Of course, we're getting 18 houses up for taking care of the case. Uh, the second award, which is what just happened, um, this is, um, we got an award letter on April 19th, which was just, you know, just. Then on April 21st, you know, we had our public meeting, it was open to the public, and we had all the parties there, our state representative was there, Kurt Shering, who shared with us the good news about the additional dollars, and you can see the funds, uh, you know, we got another 332. Now, this time, uh, our portion, and it's based on ratios of the total amount, our portion would be 13,203, is what, uh, they're gonna ask us to contribute towards this last round of money. And on those two houses that are getting mitigated in May, this is the money to go towards taking care of them, so we still have a few months left. Now, that brings the grand total of our mitigation bucket of money, let's say, and that's an estimate, and I think it's give or take, it's 2,155,580 dollars. Which is, you know, considering the frustration we've had over 30 years, I'm really pleased to say that we're definitely on top of it. And, uh, communicate with, uh, State Representative Shering quite regularly about this. And the people that are on the secondary list are pretty concerned about not getting it taken care of, to be assured that he's committed and not gonna forget about us. Um, this represents the letter that just came out on April 19th, and the second page shows the breakdown, which is hard to see, but in this area here, it shows the ratio of money, how it's gonna be broken down, which is spelled out 100K is responsible for 13, uh, 283. And then, of course, at the top here, you can't see it, but that just shows our total, uh, bucket of money so far to date, which is 2,155,580 dollars, which is some good news. All right, so the next, uh, piece that I'd like to talk about is, in conjunction with our flooding, it is in the ditch, uh, it's a bigger problem, as you know. And some of you have been to the meetings, and if you're not, the purpose of this today is really just to educate you, communicate, educate, motivate you to know what's happening. You can't see this map, but basically, they're holding the map of the stream flow rate. So, uh, this would be West Ranch, and Louisville, Canton, Trump Road, Ziver Ditch. And so, the USGS, along with, uh, Los Canyon Watershed, uh, put in a total of a million dollars. And if you look, um, the purpose of it is, is you see these little dots everywhere. So these are stations, uh, little transmitter stations, it looks something like this, Serrano's favorite, actually. Well, here, let me show you.
So you showed the robot?
It's, it's, what it is, is it's a, it's a silver box, can you guys see it? It's over at the bridge. I don't have it, of course, since I got this late in the day. So what it is, is it's a little USGS gauge, it has this, uh, little solar panel on it, you guys know what I'm talking about, everybody? Okay, so the purpose of that is, it's a gauge, and what it does is, on a regular basis, it projects out information every hour, one to four hours. Unless there's a major event, you know, like a storm event, then they can do it 15 minutes, 30 minutes, that kind of thing. And what's interesting is that all this data around the whole mattering system, which is like a million dollar project, is now reflecting that, and they're building a computer model. And the purpose of that is, is that within a year or two, we're not gonna be doing Band-Aid approaches. We're gonna know where the issues are for the detention or retention ponds, based on north, south, wherever the case is, we're gonna know. And the other thing is, is on this, um, robot, very analog, it's showing that at the bottom of the bridge, so you got the creek, right? So the creek rises, and you can set alerts to notify you when it's to a certain height rate. Well, the bottom of the bridge is 12.2 feet, and the top of the sidewalk is 14.2. So if the water gets 14.2, you know we have a problem, right? So, why I tell you this is because with technology, and everybody with smartphones and texting, I bet you if I just asked for a show of hands, pretty, pretty much, everybody in here probably has X before, can I say that's accurate? Yes? Okay, so if you look at this, we're looking at this screen now, we're going back to the screen. So right here is the map, and this is what's called a, um, uh, if you go to the USGS, government forward slash Water, okay? If you go there, this map pulls up, and then on the left side, it looks like that. So what you could do is, you can actually search, let's say it's North Canton, let's say you have a loved one that lives in Canton, uh, you know, by the river or something, or in Louisville, they flood all the time. You could actually plug in North Canton, okay, it's real simple, go to the website, plug in North Canton. And then what you do is, it pulls up the site rack. Now, this is the Ziver Ditch right by Glenwood, the one I just showed you and talked about. So it plugs in the site number, and identifies it. So then what you do is, you subscribe to Water, so this is how easy it is to set up. So send your friends, family, tell your constituents, tell your friends, go ahead and subscribe. And once you do that, then it's gonna give you this form. Now, on this form, you can't read it, but you can see the handout. What you can do is, you can schedule a search by the hour, by the day. You can pick how many feet of water you want to notify, and it can come via email or text, or to your iPad. And all you have to do is fill that out, pick your choices, which are in here, and then hit submit, and then they're pretty much, you know, that's it. I mean, you can set up, it's really pretty easy.
Can someone turn the lights back on, John?
So I can see what I'm doing.
Hey, John, I got a question while you're waiting.
Yeah, sure.
Go back to the, uh, mitigation. If the, if numbers 12 and 13 take it, then when is 14? Will that be the next round of funding?
Yes, there's a good chance 14 may make it. Uh, again, it has to do with what the values are, your appraisal values, and is it acceptable? So like number 13, if they just bought a house for 144 whatever, in October, just a few months ago, there's probably a good chance that they're not gonna wanna move. However, they get the option to do it. So if they give an appraisal of 190, they might say, no, let's do it, they're planning on it. So we don't know, but there's a good chance for sure, 13 and 14 is on the edge, 14's on the edge for sure, but they still may, may get it done. So in conclusion, what I wanted to do here is, before I was a council member, you know, and I'm around, I run into a lot of people. And one of the issues with citizens, that they get frustrated, like, of the citizen perspective, is they say they don't, you know? Since I'm in the profession of NP, what's going on over here? It looks like they took some trees out, or hey, they're putting some new trees and putting fencing up over here on, uh, you know, over on East Maple, or what about Hoover, or maybe Ziver Ditch? I hear rumors that they're gonna tear all the houses down. You know, so they always wanna know these things, and I don't have the answers. So before council, you know, I was frustrated because as a professional in the industry of real estate, people always look to me for the answers. And so, I often had those same questions, you know, maybe the Christmas sake, what day is that, what time is it, things like that. Uh, now that I'm, uh, involved as a member of the council, one of the things that I thought would be important is to build better communications with the public. And how I want to do that was is bridging that gap between the perceived city government and the citizens. By educating them through the YouTube channel I put together, so that I can keep more informed, as well as the other citizens of North Canton. And they're convinced to give them information where they are, if they can't be here. And as we, you know, educate and motivate, we wanna motivate our constituents, our friendly competitors to be engaged, to communicate better. Motivate and educate the constituents. And I think with the technology that we have, you know, too many search engines are YouTube and Google, so let's take advantage of these free technologies. So I hope that by communicating this message, I educated you, I motivated you into wanting to do more of the same yourself, in your, or supporting the city. Any questions?
John, that was good, well done, very good.
So next one. Just to clarify, so when you have two to three homes to be added with new funding, uh, we can, it's safe to assume that out of 19 homes, two would be the minimum of the new funding, so we should have the first 13.
They're gonna, they're gonna be conservative and say that, but there's a good chance it could be three.
But at least there's gonna be 11 plus two.
Yeah, yes, right, we have, if you flip back through that, we have three that are getting demoed now, right? That are already on the list, uh, closing May, or hopefully getting rid of May. But the problem is, is if the cost went up. So we had an average of a thousand dollar demo cost, the first five. Now, the demo costs is going up, all the costs are coming in higher. So until we have the hard cost, and then there's asbestos mitigation. So you know, everything with the federal funds, everything has to be done until the end of the degree. So it's just a matter of finding out what the money, how the money shakes out then. So they think it'll be two, for sure, probably three, but let's go on the conservative side.
So then it would be two plus?
It would be, let me go back here.
So a minimum of 13 out of 19 homes.
We got 11 out of the way, three are coming, so it's okay. That's 13, right? I gotta go back to my list, I may know what pages this is on, I don't know.
Yeah, so, um, the one I can afford to be after?
After 19, after 19.
Okay. All right, so we've got 19 initial, right? 11 are already in the handle, uh, eight have been destroyed, three are on the schedule, so eight, 10, 11. And then we have two to three more in this round of money, so that's where we are.
Yes, that'll be.
The only thing that will change is, is if someone declines the offer, then it goes to the next person.
So it'll be at least 13, possibly 14.
Right, but so far, no one's declined the money. We just had, you know, one person wasn't happy with the appraisal, they contested it, so it stripped, so they moved to the back of the line, while they were working through logistics. Once they got to logistics, they're not on the schedule. So I hope, you know, so here's the, the handout, you know, and I mean, I've been, like, a lot of people don't even know where all these malls are. So now you know from the map, I put the corresponding numbers, the pictures, so you can actually see. And if you try to find, if anybody wants to know, just keep it in file. Yes, sir.
A couple of people are asking, what are they gonna, what are we doing with that property?
It's Start Parks owns it, it's just parks.
They're cutting it?
They're cutting it.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what happened was, if you notice, it's a little bit lower. Their long-term goal would probably be to lower it a little bit more, so it would be an overflow if we ever have flooding. But I feel confident from what I know about the USGS that now I was telling you about flow rate, then what they're gonna do is, once they give all this data in a couple of years, you know, we have some good heart rates, they're gonna be able to have a computer model, and they can project out where we need to put that intention pond, the slowdown from flooding out the southern, being like us. Yeah, 'cause if you're looking at how floods, it goes all the way down, looks like everything's going good, then it backs up, and then fills up the yards and blocks the basins. But any, um, any other questions, anyway?
I have, um, for a couple of properties, our safety services were able to train, we have any plans for that? So the, the upcoming homes, we're gonna do any sort of training?
They fire, always a good experience, a good.
They did it the last time around, for sure, they fired.
Yeah, we couldn't check with them, we haven't done some.
Yeah, they probably already checked, it depends on the speed and how, but they're gonna take them houses down.
So I hope that this information finds you well. Let me know if there's anything I can do to help you guys, thanks.
Thanks for letting us know.
Yeah, my question.
For John, so just real quick, we made the residents happy, anybody who was at that meeting, they were clapping, I'm just going for it. It was one of the most contentious, angry, emotional meetings in your, your town, right? And I worry what you do, I'm just so happy, it's kind of explosive. They never should, let's face it, those homes never should have been built, they've built there, it's a bloodhound, they were. So, but I think this is such a great way to, I just, our local community, federal, state, our, our, Kurt Shering working towards this, just to give this, these people now that, uh, to move on with their lives, that there's nothing forcing that, that you can't afford. I mean, you know, if you work every night, it's raining, and you beat her to it. So I'm also surprised that someone bought a house down there, I told, I mean, it's, it's perplexing. But the big thing is too, 13 less rooftops and drainage, you know, that, even that little bit means something. You're gonna have grass, you're gonna have a lower elevation for a contention area, but you're not gonna have some rooftops and duders and all falling right back down there. Some of the water will be absorbed by nature or the grass and trees, that hopefully will be planted there, so.
Well, I mean, and Kurt Shering, I give him credit because, you know, this is like a little fiddle for him probably, but he's been really diligent and good. I mean, he calls me, like, I'll take you an example, what happened. Uh, there was a person that wanted to get on the secondary list, and they, it was a misunderstanding, uh, when they wanted to get on the list, he's, he didn't have flood insurance, because his house was paid for. So he thought he qualified, it was just a misunderstanding, so he didn't get on the list. So we started a secondary list, and, uh, he talked to Kurt Shering afterwards, and Kurt said, hey, I'll give you a call. So after the meeting, he signed in, but he didn't bring his phone number down. So Kurt calls me Saturday and says, hey, he goes, uh, what's that guy's number, I need a comment, I wanna come, hi, I'm in my word. So I had to track him down, and went to his house Saturday, and pay him close, and talked to him, he was really tickled, and then Representative Shering called him, you know, made contact with him. So, so I'm just saying, that's what we wanna see more, just a base like that, because he's in the corner backing for us to fight for that money that we need to help ease the pain. Because like I said, well, most of the people I talked to that had flood issues, they can't sleep at night, when their brains aren't, they freak out. It's like, it's like, you know, uh, like a nap, it's like a, a major traumatic experience. And if you've never been kind of a flood like that, where you feel your life's spread, and, you know, we look at it, we have our experiences, it's not a big deal, but it's a big deal, for people to experience it. So I'm gonna take a little bit of that, be part of it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, John. All right, next up, my name's the property manager.
You have a significant and contentious issue tonight, um, you have $3,000, generously donated to us. Uh, we posted a block box to make sure you're advised for anything else, um, and it's not easy, so we're gonna take it out, block box, and do the disrepair, ready to appropriate.
Any question on that? Can I motion a second to amend the agenda to include discussion regarding, um, trees, dog trees? Dog trees. Can I motion a second? All right, all right, say aye, is a full same sign, motion carries.
Uh, next week, we're going to probably through the third reading to remove the tag on for the dog tree. And I thought that'd be a nice thing, and I really have heard, I heard any, any things against a few of you, uh, you've heard of our group. In, in honor of the history of pride of that type of thing, I'd like to recommend that we create a resolution, making the dog tree our city tree of North Canton. So we still keep it within, you know, the, the realm of North Canton. I know the lines gets doggo trees away, you know, the kids, like, my wife makes those away every year, you know, third grade. And, um, and it is a part of history, it just may not be a tagline, that being one, but we could keep that within, uh, the entire, you know, city history type of thing by making it our city tree of North Canton. So if that, you know, get a little discussion on, have anybody, you know, give the answer or, uh, wait, whatever, anything?
I think it's a, a good way to accomplish what it is that people care about, which is that connection, and I think it's a great idea.
So if they're wanting to plant doggo trees, it's our city tree, and you can agree, go ahead and do that, it doesn't make any more way, you know?
Who would you say would like doggo trees? Just anyone?
Well, so then we should plant some doggo trees at Doggo Park, or by Doggo Green. We have a lot of canopy over oaks and basils, and that's where they're really thriving, um, you can see next to the houses, or some of that, they're, they're a great tree. Since we've got the topic of drag around town, the paint and white of, and, and there's more out there, you really think. And I think it's a way just to, to, uh, really acknowledge the, the history of North Canton, and a very good way for people to. The laundry is an honor, and to, you know, they're very fortunate, North Cantonians, that's, that's a great suggestion.
So we're good with that, man?
Yeah.
Now, a resolution, what do we have to do, just, uh, just basically sign?
Let's do that then.
Okay.
Just, uh, all right.
Yeah, uh, let's, let's do that, uh, can I motion a second to amend the agenda one more time, discuss, uh, parking?
Some park, just some park, uh, information I wanna bring forward, I'll make that motion. Second, uh, those fairytale, I'm gonna go the same side, motion carries. Thank you, um, we had a court meeting, and I agree, and we got a lot going on, I just wanted to get this in front of everybody right now. We wanna pass this on one reading, and like, you know, Gavin, you can, you know, but one of the things we wanna do is modify our, our ordinance 3213. Once a small change, you change the time that morning rate will apply from 12 to 1, probably a little later, once you get through that meeting. Second thing, you know, we're right around the corner from wedding season.
I didn't get that last thing.
Okay, so you're back to that.
Morning, something you said.
Yeah, right now, if you order 3213, there's a great structure that morning rates, you have to vacate the premise by 12 noon. We're gonna add an hour to that, so if you're having a morning session for lunch, you got a little bit extra time. We're just gonna add that hour to 12 to 1, we can better explain that next. The second thing is, really, this is the one I'm after, is, uh, we're, we're in the wedding season, and we brainstormed the last couple of years, and we purchased rental chairs that'll be available for weddings and gatherings at the Zeebo, okay? And we're gonna put a shed up there, and really, I'd like to pass this on first read, we're not gonna do the next big opposite, what we may hopefully do at the end of May, the schedule falls out before meetings. Rental chairs, you can get, uh, rental chairs, 50 chairs for 150 dollars. So instead of going to a private company and having rented chairs, we're gonna make them available for weddings or gatherings there for 150 dollars, for 50 chair, for $3 a chair. Yeah, the renter will be responsible for taking the chairs out of the shed, with a key, set up, and then taking them down and putting them away. There's actually a deposit that'll, that'll help with that process in case something's wrong. But reasons for the, uh, sense of urgency is that if there's a wedding in June, they'd like to know if this is gonna be available. So I'm putting it out there to the public, wherever it, you know, they can comment on it next week, but then again, we'll go through the committee, and pass hopefully, words to the last, yeah, last meeting, if people miss out, so.
Sixty rental times to get the break even of the chairs, did you grab that yet?
I, I think they have, I'll have that for our meeting.
So you're three rentals, pay for it, so we start?
Three, I think it's three to five rounds, pay for it. But it's, it's a convenience factor too, of not waiting around and responsible.
Are there good deals that you can rent to the money used outside?
I don't believe so.
So that's, that's fine. It's really not barring any of those tables. So that's, that's, that's borrowing, you must be able to.
We have some, we have some that we rent, are we doing?
We would make smart.
How many?
But that's what we can discuss though.
We, we tried a lot at that hotel, we rented chairs today, and we think we just, you know, whatever, people just want to use them. Because it's so expensive, they have sometimes, can't share it out with the women or anybody.
Right, you gotta wait around, or.
We just roll in, we find one for one.
Yes, they're responsible, where a rent is responsible for if they want to pay additional money. And then we have a four hundred dollar deposit, and that's a little cover, if something does happen to the chair. I think it's just a nice, tangible, or another thing that we offer in North Canton.
People love the outside noise, too, so they want it outside.
There's a lot outside noise.
Exactly.
For gatherings. And just to bring up just a few of some park things, um, the pool seems to be on schedule, and the dogging boards will be put back in. We had, we had a situation where we didn't know, the latest, the last, the latest information says we're going to be grandfathered for last ones, various, but they're not going to be available for the pool opening uh, for later day weekend, it'll be early June when they're being put in. But the dogging boards will continue, I thought it was a great thing we could do that. And that was, you know, when you have, when you remodel things, you have requirements or standards, you don't always beat them with the way the pool's shaped and so forth, but I think, uh, Jim Davis worked very hard on that to bring them back, because it's kind of like, and I kind of think we have the dogging boards, and we're paying for it, it's going to be back. Three meter.
This is good, Jeff and I will be right to live with that one.
But we have a lot going on with updating, you know, scoreboards at Price Park, uh, Whitmer, we're doing a basketball court there, and we can get a painting, I mean, I've really been mad, we put. Well, we got an estimate for the skateboard for that recent deployment, I'll try to get that to you.
Oh, to do it? Okay.
Can you take some test parts?
Yes, we have, and actually behind Dogwood Sheller itself, which has been a beautiful, uh, modernization, improvements there, we're going to take that back road to go to, uh, the west side of it, with a grill on the other side. You know, you kind of just get it in there, or the bathrooms, we're, we're going to bring that around. So just once again, something more available to the public to face for, you know, it would be, uh.
Is it present, would you say, or would you have?
It's the most popular thing, yes, that's.
Can we get another one?
If we can have another one, it'd be great, and if we could, of course, it would. And, um, last but not least, just talking about the North Canton claim, I wanted to hand you the way that came out. Um, obviously, we have some people who are in the audience, John Bellamy Roll came out, and Tom Quinn, uh, Tim Fox is here, appreciate it, T. Wilder, Mark Seretta came out, um, and then Jeff Peters brought us four lovely daughters. And let's see if I got the names, Andrew Moll, and David and Link, is that correct, and Jeff? Just for him to do that, to get these young girls up at seven thirty, get dressed, get a dump, and get their day. And they actually had a great time, I guess, uh, definitely Jeff, so. And my wife helped out, and herself, so appreciate, Mark's sort of financier, I think he did, but appreciate everybody coming on. And it's a first, it's a first year event, and then we got about fifteen, eighteen bags of trash. And you know, you don't see it when you drive a bike, when you walk it, there's always something to pick up. It's amazing, there's some areas in the city I'm going to concentrate on more next year. But hopefully we'll get more information available to the public, and the schools, and this is an event really relevant. And I know everyone can't make it on Saturday, and guys texted me, called me, and that's great. Listen, if you want to do something that way, then that's what it's about. If you had the time, fine, if you have family, banners, or schedules, and you know, that's okay. There'll always be another time to do it, so thanks to everybody.
Just a quick comment, I, and kudos to you for that, taking charge, that was really well set up, but it's not the idea, how many people I try to show up, we talked about that, is that's the day that we want to remind people to clean up the city, clean up themselves. You know, their yards, we're going to clean up themselves, but they're yards, you know? And I have to say, I, I did the walk, I did the walk on South Main and that, and I have to say, it was pretty clean.
Yeah.
And it really was, you know, kind of happy, I mean, we all had a little pit, and all the repairers for us, and the vest and everything, which was really kind of cool. And, uh, whether it was our city people did it, or the people that actually have business on Main Street, I was really proud of how clean it actually was compared to, you know, the, you know, right after, it's still kind of spring after winter, it's still. So kudos to whoever, I mean, it should be an idea that we care about, actually, it's the pride, and it's just a reminder of that day. We can grow on that, so a credit job, I think that started it, it's just.
Well, here's the, like I said, there's some other challenges that, you know, maybe it's just not North Main and and some of the side streets, but you know, behind Aliso, that's, that's the land we're got here. So we probably don't own property, but I think we really have to work with Paul Brad or somebody. There, there's stuff that you can't believe, who could send trucks up there and clean it up? But I think that needs to be addressed, we can contact them, or try and, or clean up, and just, you know, like, you know, there's a place where we'd spend all morning there.
Well, that's when these people need to be sent to, you know, our guy used to go and say.
Because unfortunately, if that's not clean, they will end up on Main Street, or, or Apple Road, or some side.
Is it just a wind catcher, is that what it is?
It is, it's a park.
Years and years of catch up.
It's a parking lot, just probably just flies down, or you get stuck in the brush, you know? I'm not saying people just walk out, I'm sure that happens too, but there's certain areas in town that that need to address, and just kind of forgotten.
It's like a wind tunnel, it's like a catch hall.
Yeah, right.
And it's been accumulating here for years, and it's a, you know, having a wooded section. One of the thoughts is maybe getting any.
Fence.
A fence. Because we've done that in some of the recycling drywall, so I'm putting eight foot fences in those corners because we had one of the massive fishers, wooden area, just a ton of all sorts of debris, I'll put in an eight foot fence, and then, you know, that'll catch a large portion of it. So that might be something we can look at, once it's cleaned up. But you can still have a small section for people to walk through on the pathways, because it is a, uh, an area where the residents that live in apartments walk through that area, the path.
Right. And, and some of these areas are little small ditch areas, water ditch areas, that who knows through the years, who's responsible for what.
Right.
And now it's, you know, it's regulated by owners around it, or who, who knows, state, you know, county. But, you know, just collectively, maybe we can do a better job addressing some of those things and moving forward. Yeah, thanks again to everybody, and the apartment department, you know, that came out, played it all out with us, and I was just. Thank you, great job, I can, very, that's it.
Okay. With that, our ten, most good, so thank you. Most there say aye? Aye. A little shake sign right there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Fossilized.
We paid for this, it's like a thousand, you know? So you know.
Bro, what's your problem?
It's great.
She would set that all up, babe.
Yeah.
You're so careful, I have to say. And you know.
Did you have your bike traffic, it's something?
No, no, that was.
Thank you, they stopped at the same time. I would have had a concern.